...in biomedical in Kansas City, Missouri. And now he's doing his 13 medical, that's 11 years of college. And once he's done, he still has three years of specialty. Don't ask me, he doesn't want on this number. He wants to make money.
We can let this out.
He wants to live. He said he wants to be...
What's his specialty?
Well, he's a bodybuilder.
Ah, okay.
Probably sports medicine or ortho big surgery, I don't know yet. Whatever. Thank you. Yeah, he's 28, so he's working.
Is this Ed?
I have five majors.
Yes.
I have five.
With a friend, maybe? Oh, that...
That's the intern.
Actually, look like, make money. Here, you know, it's not the same thing.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Happy Wednesday, so all. I'm actually all over the spring, so happy spring.
This is the Franklin Township Public Library Meeting on June 27th, 2018. I will call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll call the roll. Ed Ward.
Present.
NBC.
Present.
Iris.
Here.
Agnes. Mayor Kramer.
No.
John Clyde.
Here.
And Tom Lennon.
Here.
Seeing there is a quorum, we have a quorum, so we will proceed. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have also been posted in the library's vestibule and are available at the reference Is there a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We're in public session. Would anyone like to make any observations or comments?
No, just not.
Okay.
Mr. President, hearing no comment from the public, I move the public portion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Passed. We will now consider approving the minutes of the April 25th meeting. I'm sure you've all had a chance to see them. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion about this motion? Seeing no discussion, we'll call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, this is going nicely. Director's report. January.
Look at the financials first.
Okay.
Only one more month to go before we close out the year. Other than that, there's nothing really outstanding about this, but you still may have questions or comments.
I've looked it over. I have no comments or questions.
No comment on the...
Not at this time.
Would you like to go?
What?
On to your next report?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Okay, so as you probably have noticed, our summer reading program began on June 15th. It's going full force. Library is devoted to it. We had some staff members out in the vestibule on the 19th, helping people sign up as they entered the library if they wanted to participate. And during May, we had 1,671 people at 98 programs. And the young adult librarian has been very busy, as she always is, but on May 9th, she worked with Ed Ward on an outreach program. And I think that's basically it. I don't want to wind up reading to you what I've already written, so...
Correct. Very good.
Thank you. At this time, there is no president's report. There will probably be one later in the meeting in the executive session. Correspondence? January, you have given us some...
Give you two articles. Senate votes to save net neutrality, but it didn't do any good. And another one on librarians everywhere.
I think we've all gotten them, and we thank you for...
Interesting articles.
Passing these along to us. Is there any old business?
Can't think of anything.
Well, we shall go on to new business. And there's one item already on the agenda in new business, and that's the proposed budget for the year 2018, 2019. And this has been prepared and distributed to us by January. Thank you for that. Would you like to make some comments?
Sure, I can make some comments. Like I mentioned in the introduction sheet, this is an unusual budget. We had a very large appropriation this year, probably the biggest one we've ever gotten as far as difference goes. So when I was done doing the budget, I looked at all the lines, I made some adjustments. Some got increased, some got decreased a little bit. Most of them are flat. And there was money left over, specifically $192,046. And what I'm recommending is that that money be put into the capital fund. And that fund includes funding for library branches, and it can also include capital projects that need to be done in the library.
That's nice.
That is nice.
Lock the mayor out.
That's when you're late.
You know the password.
That's what happens when you're late.
Actually, the door should not be locked. Open both the windows tight.
No.
We will note that Mayor Kramer has arrived.
So what's in here is you have the anticipated revenue for '18, '19. Like I said, the township appropriation is higher, state aid is the same, interest is higher, and it will be probably higher than this because of the CD that we got. Copier income is down a little bit, fines income is down a little bit, and the video club memberships are down from last year. But I prefer to put the lower figures in, so we don't wind up short. And then the next two pages are the overall budget for all, for both branches, and then the one for Franklin Park by itself. And then I gave you an explanation of why I did what I did. That I forgot to put in my own bag.
You want...
I forgot to give myself one, so...
Oh, well, here.
So if anybody has any questions, I'll have to use that.
Very colorful budget. Color of money.
I told you, green for money.
Yeah.
Color of hope.
So, I have some questions. Okay. So if we look at line number 912, so for building maintenance. Just asking, it's wonderful that we've gone down, but why are we going down where we spent on our last budget?
You're talking at the branch, right? 912? Yeah, that's the branch. That's Branch by itself. It just didn't, this year, we didn't use that much. And if you look at the branch, the line for the, both together, it's flat. It's the same.
It's flat?
Yeah.
For both branches.
For both branches.
Yeah, so they balanced out.
They're balanced out.
But the branch just doesn't need all that maintenance, not much maintenance.
Was that mostly supplies, or...
No, it's fixing the HVAC. I think this year, we had to fix the front door, things like that.
We're renting, why are we paying...
Because that's the way the rental agreement is.
Whatever's inside has to be done by the tenants.
Yeah.
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 When you go into a rental agreement, we have some that it's the landlord's responsible for HVAC, everything. Typically, plumbing is always included, but HVAC, the maintenance thereof, can become the tenant's. Depends on how it's rented, so it's not unusual. I'm sorry.
Usually, the tenant, if they pay on whatever inside, outdoor, it's the landlord.
You see why we want our own control of our own...
I'm the one who asked for it.
You didn't say no.
Me too.
And then, I guess, we just budgeted heavy in 2017, '18 for gas and electric. We've gone down from 5,000 to 6,000.
Same thing.
Okay.
Same thing.
Now, I find the rent, so we negotiated a new rate. We went from 83,000 to 73,000, but we really didn't make any progress because they increased our CAM by 50%?
See, that's kind of confusing. When I set up the budget last year, I set up the rent and CAM together. That's why it's such a large number last time. That's why it says 83,000. But this year, I thought it was, I think it's fair just to put the rent by itself. So this 73,000 is just the rent. This 30,000 down here is the taxes and the CAM together. And I realize that's confusing, and I apologize. The CAM is $865 a month.
Tell me what CAM is.
Common area maintenance.
Snowplow and garbage removal.
Snow removing.
All right, I just, if you can break that out a little bit more, it just, it seems, it just caught my eye.
Okay.
It went up 10 grand. It went up 10,000?
Yeah, wow, yeah.
Because I switched it.
50%. Then if we were to look at, let's say, line 938 for photocopier expense.
Same amount.
When we looked at the budget previously, we only used 17% of our total budget for the year for the combined services for 2017, '18. But we're going...
Same amount.
Yeah, we only used 17% of it last year.
Yeah, that's why I left it...
Yeah, if we go to...
Left it at 1,000.
May 2018, photocopier is 938 as well on the other page.
Right.
And it shows that we utilized 17% of the total budget.
Right.
We have a surplus of $3,700 based off of $4,500. So my question is, is why would we go to $6,000 in 2019?
Because I'm anticipating the copier that's right behind us, it's ancient.
All right, so we're going to make a capital investment.
2009, so I'm anticipating that's going to go. And so we would need to buy a new one. And there's other, and I never know with these copiers, they're actually, at this point, they're printers. That's a copier. I never know what kind of maintenance they're going to need, so that's why, that's why I did it that way.
Okay. So expense includes purchase of new one if it comes up?
Yes, yes.
I think that's the...
2009, the video copy?
Yeah. Can I see? Can I see your...
Notes.
Yeah, it's from 2009. Yeah.
It's better.
I know. It's amazing.
All right.
I don't know if this question is appropriate at this time, but have we thought about doing any maintenance on the concrete in front of the building? There are a lot of open spaces that...
Cracks.
Cracks that, there are more than cracks that need to be addressed.
I think that's municipal.
So do we need to notify them, or...
Do you know whether, who...
I think it's, I think it usually is the town.
Yeah, we notify the town.
I can do that.
January.
I can do that.
Yeah, that's important.
I'm not 100% sure what that contract is, but my guess is it would be municipal budget.
I know they just replaced the sidewalks on the side, or parts of them.
They did over there?
Yeah, over there.
Then that would be...
These don't even look like pieces that need, whole pieces that need to be, you know, jackhammered out. Just small repairs in small areas, but somebody could...
I'll take a look at it tomorrow, and then I'll call.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the budget for 2018, 2019?
I just have one on training and conferences. That's one of my delights. And I noticed that you use about 70%. Do you foresee any conferences coming up next year that you'd like to send your entire staff? Like, for example, ISTI will be in Philadelphia, which is the big instructional technology conference.
Oh, yes?
Yes. So that's something I like to think about.
But there's usually, okay, there's usually extra money in there for that kind of thing.
Good.
So, yeah, we can try and do that.
And as we continue to develop our partnership with the school district...
Yes.
There may be some conferences that may come down, like the American Association School Librarians have conferences. Even though this is a public library, it's good to send someone there to participate, because then you have an idea of the school library trends and strategies, except that's part of building a partnership.
Is there a motion to approve the budget? NBC? And Iris, seconded? I think she did before you did.
Yeah.
As long as we get there.
Okay, we have the motion. If we really followed Robert's rules, we'd discuss it now, but I think we've already discussed it, so I'm going to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This one has passed unanimously.
Oh, and do you want to make a separate vote, or what do you want to do about the money that's going to be left over, the $192,000?
I think that's your...
Dedicate that into the capital fund.
Do you want...
I think that's your call.
Well, I think it would be better if it was in the minutes that you want to allocate that into the capital fund.
How much is in the capital fund?
How much is in right now? It's about 5 million?
Yeah, that certainly should be voted on by the board.
The director has indicated that there is a surplus of $192,046 from her budget, comparing it to what is going to be coming, anticipated to come in. Is there a motion to move this $192,046 to the capital fund?
For the record, since this, the purpose of this is because of some of the outstanding capital needs that we're facing in terms of facilities?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'll make the motion.
Second. Discussion. So, is this truly a capital fund, or is this a surplus, a fund balance?
It's going into a capital fund.
So it can only be spent on capital?
Yes.
So if you were, if you increased your staff, you couldn't pay salaries from it?
Right. Right. That's my understanding, that we put it into that, and that's what it's meant for.
And that's how our capital fund on the municipal side works. Is there another account that you have, like a general fund balance?
No.
Are you allowed to?
I don't know.
Because you may, I mean, right now, the capital fund balance is pretty healthy, though we may dig into it very heavily, hopefully in the coming years with the branch. But I would wonder if you want to have some buffer... I mean, do you ever have expenses that are non-capital, that are unexpected, that you would need perhaps a...
Greater flexibility.
Well, I have, I mean, the last time I had a big expense that I can remember was when the stool pipe, we had to replace the stool pipe in the...
Would that be a capital expense?
For the sprinkler system, yeah. But...
That's maintenance. That's repair. Replacing something that was already there...
So you're just comparing a big expense that was not capital?
Yeah.
No.
So you don't need, you don't think you need a... We have a, we have a large general fund balance that we can use very flexibly. You're, this is pigeonholing you. But if you don't think, if you think that's all the way you need it, that's fine. I mean, are books capital?
No.
My understanding is that the trustees can take money out of capital and reallocate it. I think that's what the audit, when we were talking to the auditor, didn't he...
Is that true?
Mention something like...
My understanding is that once it goes in there, it has to be, only be used for that, and you can't, you can't... Well, aren't, isn't there restricted and unrestricted?
There's all kinds of rules.
Yeah.
And I know the municipal rules, but I don't know the library rules.
Checking.
Well, in that vein, if, when, and if the new branch gets going, and you're going to need money for, to pay staff, you'll need to just, will that come out of the capital fund? No.
No.
Where will that money come from?
That'll come out of the regular operating budget.
So will we have enough money in there to pay a staff or a new branch from the budget?
Right now, it's razor, it's razor thin, because I, remember, I worked that out. I did the, some budgets, and it was very, very close. However...
So then, should we not anticipate that we're going to need money for staff?
You could, but then you could also anticipate that the, the books are in there, that the appropriation's going to be either the same or increased again next year, so that would take care of that.
If we may...
It's gaining the time.
Can we look at the bylaws, see if we can establish a, another fund that offers us, as the mayor said, a little bit more flexibility, just in case we need it?
It's actually going to be state law, but...
There's nothing in the bylaws. I mean, I can get them.
Just to make sure there's nothing forbidding us from doing so, saying, "You have to do this, or you have to do that."
It's state law that would mandate where money can go, and like, and you can't change things from various budget items in the municipal budget until November. And then in November, since you've gone that much into the year, it's okay to start switching. There's all kinds of rules with it. And while I know some of them, I don't know them in detail. I have a manager to know that. So, I mean, where does the money sit before we put it in, but in capital surplus? Where is it right now?
Right now, it's, it kind of doesn't exist because we haven't finished the year. Because this is going into the year, so this is money that's going to be coming in and not spent.
So can we wait another month and find out?
Sure.
We could find out what the rules are. The idea of saving it, though, for salary if we get a branch, if we can't sustain a grant, a branch in perpetuity, we have to dip into savings to pay operating expenses, then we shouldn't have a branch.
Yeah, I remember you said that.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, then, yeah, put it, we'll table it.
As a go-to person, we should ask for advice on this as far as state law.
I can ask the state library, or else I can, I can ask our attorney. He's a library specialist.
Let's do that, and then we'll, and we'll address it another 30 days.
Or we don't have a...
Okay.
And I think it can wait.
So, is the consensus that we should table this motion?
You have, you have a motion.
I'll withdraw the motion.
That's what you agree.
Okay.
And it's, the second term has to agree. Sorry, I'm a Robert's Rules guy.
You're a parliamentarian. I thought tabling was the thing that we had to do.
Someone could have made a motion to table it, too.
Yeah, yeah.
You're right, that's another way to...
So are we tabling the budget, or just the...
No, the budget has...
Just the surplus part.
The anticipated surplus, I guess.
Yeah, anticipated, we should call it that.
Okay. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel and property negotiations.
Who was that?
Iris. Ed, and then Iris. Okay. Is there, those in favor of passing this motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I think you're going to have to...
You have to follow.
Me too. Me too.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. I think breaking ground in years. I think it was a 14-month... Yvonne is over there.
The young man?
Yes.
How about Ann?
I don't know where she is. I told Mike at the desk to tell her when he sees her.
High school student?
No, college.
College student?
Yeah. I think he's in his first year or second year. Uh, second. Second, yeah, yeah.
In college?
Practice, yeah.
What is he doing?
Government study, that's not what it's called, but...
Something like that.
Political science.
You just lost so much for going.
He's studying to be the next mayor of Franklin.
Careful.
Welcome back.
Yeah, better here. Yeah.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're now in the, in the regular session.
Agenda go.
Oh, gosh, I rewrote on it. I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's okay. We'll get over it.
I have a question about the, the progress of the north branch, of the north branch for the library.
Right, it's my understanding, we just, we just hired the architect. I think it's going to be a year until groundbreaking. I think the building is 14 months.
It's okay.
So...
So all the way down the road.
Two years.
What I've learned about it is that, since there was so little parking, they've managed to move the building back on the property a bit to make a few more parking spaces. But that the land across the street, which is owned by several people, is, doesn't seem to be available. I think that they've been, those owners have been approached, and so we're still at a, there's still going to be very sparse parking.
My question is, 1,200 square feet would be enough? I mean...
It's pretty big. Well, when you leave, look at the lowest level children's room. The yellow floor, it's the same size as that. And that's, that's pretty big.
Now, how does that compare to the space that we used to have in that building on the corner?
Oh, much bigger. Much bigger.
I mean, I just, Agnes and I were just having this discussion, that that has been, since I came on this board, which is a long time ago, really a focus. I've lived in the town, you know, not that long, but long enough, that I've seen the need for that to be there, and I... need for, for that to be there and I, and I just feel passionate that, you know, it's a long time to wait, I don't know what to do about it, but it's a long.
Anything we would do is gonna take that long anyway. So it's, and it's coming, and it's costing us.
Now, are we, is somebody on the library board in talking with the, we went to that meeting last summer, right?
Yes.
And so, is there anybody from this board that's going in with any of the meetings with the architect or, so that we have any input into anything?
Well, you already have the, the input. The, I mean, the floor plan is pretty much set.
Set.
They're now gonna figure out where you put the beams and how to pour the concrete and things like that.
Yeah.
Is that the one on Lewis Street?
Lewis.
Lewis Street.
L E W I S.
Because there's a lot of new, there's a lot of new construction. I was just down on Hamilton Street and it, it looks like elevator shafts being put up there, you know, so I, there's gonna be a lot more.
Well, Lewis Street itself seems to be a real orphan in this township. It's, there doesn't seem to be much recognition of the town's property maintenance.
But on Hamilton Street, there's new construction going up.
Yeah.
One of those is the, that couple that we were talking, or I was talking to a few years ago, I remember, that was gonna have, remember with the parking?
Yes.
The stores underneath?
Yeah.
And apparently they sold it to that company that we used to do, Ban, what's their name?
Bancliff.
Bancliff, so Bancliff is the project name. But that, that was, you know, they didn't have enough parking.
Right.
And they would never, and they would never answer us. I kept asking, I kept asking, and they wouldn't answer. So that's one of them, I think that's the big one with the elevator shafts.
Yes, looks like four elevators.
Yeah.
In that shopping center, right bef, right before Sophie's Bistro, before coming from here there?
Johns.
Where it used to be John's and Lydia's, are any of those stores empty?
No, they're all, they're all, they have ninety-nine cents.
So.
But that puts us back renting again.
No, no, I didn't mean going there, I thought that maybe we could use some of the parking there.
Oh, oh. The parking is huge.
The parking lot, that's a huge parking lot and it's, and it's empty lot.
Yes.
Kind of far.
Mayor, you gonna say?
I did it in the streets.
I, I didn't know, well, I thought we were getting off topic of the library board, but I, I didn't realize why you were asking that, so it gets off topic.
It is, because, you know, it's, it's sort of a solution if we're dragging our feet because there's not all parking and you can't get the people across the street to sell, then it's, it's.
The township has offered a very generous, generous proposal of providing space in a building they're building. We would pay the four hundred dollars a square foot for that and then live there rent-free and maintenance-free and heat-free and all that, so I, I think it's a great deal. And with the, this allows us much more money to build our southern branch, and I, I just don't see turning that down.
Oh, I'm not saying that, I'm just thinking, you know.
We haven't really discussed whether the library would pay the full construction cost or a major portion of it, but, so that, that really hasn't.
That actually becomes something we do need to discuss.
The, the thing that I wonder about is, would it be a general branch if there's not adequate parking for people to come with their children and, and, you know, we might, you need two or three parking places just for staff.
Well, that's, that's calculated there, there is that kind of parking. But the, the general idea of the youth center initially was to provide for facilities for people who can't drive. And so it's gonna catch the people around there. If you can drive to the northern branch, you could drive to here, it's not that much farther. So that was the original thought. There's now some thought that there's need for parking and there's some looking into that.
Mayor, when will you be in a position where you can give us an update as to what the status of those parking negotiations are?
Um.
Any year?
Yeah, I don't know exactly.
Okay, but at some point.
Does anyone have any other questions for the mayor or for anyone else?
Do we go into open session?
We are in open session. We are in open session, yes. We could, we could by motion open the public portion again. Would someone like to?
Some of them.
Second?
Sir?
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Again, we're in public session, would anyone like to address us?
Thank you, I'll have to take a look at Lewis Street, that's where you're obviously anticipating some sort of a branch.
Yes, you'll see, you'll see a large empty lot there with a fence around it on Lewis Street, and that's, it's about a, what, a three-quarter acre lot or something?
But it's not a replacement for the Franklin.
No.
For the other branch, this is a new.
It's a southern branch.
Different area, yes.
That's what I sort of gathered, I wanted to clarify that, thank you.
I can show you on the map just where it is.
And I'd like to get a copy of the budget now that it's been approved, if possible.
Oh, okay.
At some point, unless it's online, I don't know.
Not online yet, 'cause it wasn't approved until, just tonight.
Okay, then I'll wait till it's online, there's no problem, thank you.
Here is no further comment. I move we close the public portion and adjourn the meeting till, we meet again August twenty-seventh.
Is there a second to that motion?
Wait, 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 does somebody need to motion to come out of public session?
Oh.
Oh, you did that? Oh, that's a joint?
A lot of, a lot of motion.
And, and our parliamentarian seems to agree that that's.
Okay, and then who is the second?
Highly regular.
Okay. Those in favor of, of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
It's happy summer.
Yes, you'll like Linda.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, it's a fellow who just talked. His wife has gone for a year.
Your wife?
No, his.
His wife.
All right.
I was.